This Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, meeting of the Grafton Board of Library Trustees to Order. First thing, under announcements, I would like to acknowledge with a moment of silence, the recent passing of former head librarian Barbara Brayley. Thank you. And I will use my Rollers Chair to wish my son Blake a happy 13th birthday.
Happy birthday Blake.
Happy birthday Blake. Nothing like embarrassing your son, right?
Yeah, really.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Policy Subcommittee Updates. Aaron, do you have any?
Nothing new from Policy Subcommittee, except that we are looking for at least a third member still. So if anybody is interested in joining, especially on the library side, that would be helpful because we have two trustees already.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else have any items regarding policy? All right, I did have one item that I would just at least mention that as far as, I don't think we have any policy that states who has card access among the trustees. There was an alarm that went off. I guess some teens had thought the library, it appears that they thought the library was open and we were still with our winter hours, and so they tried to open the community room door, which happened to be unlocked. And so it set off the alarm. The alarm company called me and they asked me, "Do you want to have the Grafton Police Department show up?" I was like, well, not knowing what was going on, they showed up. Thank you, Grafton Police Department. I didn't get the names of the two officers. They were awesome and responded very quickly. But I didn't, even though I was able to get into the building because of the situation, I wasn't able to lock up or close up or do anything. Or if it had been a situation which, you know, would have required me to get in and I couldn't have gotten in, what have we done, I mean, in the past as far as access?
So we're, clearly we're the stewards of the library and custodians of the library.
Right.
But we're still members of the public.
Sure.
And it's a town building, right?
Right.
So certainly the police, I think, was a good direction to go with. And then I would say certainly, you know, the town, the town administrator, in the absence of a director. But usually the director would take that sort of a call. I'm kind of surprised that the alarm company had called you directly.
Right.
But they probably should have had Evan on speed dial as the acting director and not a library trustee.
That's what I would expect too.
So it may have just been an administrative thing that I got called.
Yep.
And so you're saying that as an executive board, really, it's where we shouldn't be charged with having access or in a situation like that? It's just, from a policy standpoint, I just wanted to bring it up.
I think in the past, library director might have given us access, but, you know, for a specific thing.
Okay.
And what were you saying, how did the alarm go off?
No, it turned out that the community room exterior door had not been locked.
Oh, and someone tried to open it to get in?
Well, the teens, the teens probably thought, what, may have thought it was open, and they were like, "Oh, let's go to another door."
Okay, I get it.
And they stuck around. They seemed like good kids.
Well, that's good. I mean, so it was just...
It was just an innocent thing.
Yeah, very innocent.
All right, I just figured I'd bring that up.
Yeah, I don't think, when I was chair, I'd never had access to the library.
Okay.
It was always the director and then just the town.
Okay.
I have, so for like events, there is a code to lock. I've never had a key to get in. Whenever, like, we have events for the friends, a member of the staff, you know, will meet us if we need to be there outside of operating hours, but then there is a code to do the alarm when you're leaving.
Okay. All right, and that's in a different situation, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So administrative assistant vacancy as item number three, and I guess there's been a couple of interviews. And so that's in motion, so.
All right. Do we know if that administrative assistant would also be, you know, the board's?
Scribe.
Scribe, thank you.
I thought that that was part of the job description.
Mm-hmm.
So I never questioned that. I thought that that was built into the job description.
I think you're right.
So.
I would think so too.
Okay, now, so hopefully we'll hear something soon. All right, Agenda Item Four, Kubla Repairs, okay? I didn't do all the math on this, so I am going to rely on others and that includes us getting together as far as doing the math, but also Doug, you had mentioned reaching out regarding all funding sources, including the Leeds 180,000 monies. And what money's available and what are the limitations on spending? So what did you find out?
I can find out, I can let you know. So the Leeds certification, that rebate goes back to the building and construction grant?
Mm-hmm.
So it's only available to spend on any of the items that were within scope of that project. So it would not be available for the Kubla.
So does then, once, but since we're now in occupancy, does that money then go back to the town?
Well, yeah.
Or does it go?
It goes back to pay off the bond.
Pay off the bond.
Okay, gotcha.
I think it, you know, I think it would be applicable to pay any, what do you call it, like insurance deductible for the damage with the carpets, the, any of the electrical work, the HVAC work that's been done, right? Anything that was related to that project.
Okay.
Even if it wasn't part of the original project, those repairs related to that, I think it would be available to that. Otherwise, it's just to pay off the bond.
All right.
Just a question, so like, we've talked about the fact that we'd like to consider shoring up the doors, you know, the new part of the building. I think that we should, you know, strongly consider using that because we don't want to find ourselves in the situation again with another flooding if we can, you know, do, you know, I know that there's other work that's been done to address the drainage, which is wonderful, but, you know, I'd rather have overkill.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be, that's gonna have to be addressed with William.
All right, so I guess although, although I'll certainly acknowledge staying within the scope of the discussion that this item is about Kubla repairs.
Right. That's the Leeds money, there is state aid money, there's like the library equalization, what is it called, equalization fund, and then there's two state grants that we have and that money would be available to spend on the Kubla. So that's under, would be under our guidance.
So how much is left, I mean, in this current fiscal year as far as state aid and that equalization fund?
Yeah, I sent that around. It's quite a bit. It's a big chunk of money. Right, did I send that to the whole group or just to you, Roger?
I don't, I don't recall receiving it.
I don't think you sent it to the board.
I don't think, I don't recall receiving it from you, Doug.
Oh gosh, it was from Mary, there it is.
Can I get out my?
So, yeah, from state aid. All right, so from state aid, we have 170,000, I'm sorry, 126,000 in the library incentive grant and 29,000 in the library equalization grant. So that's a total of 165.
Okay, so 126 and how much?
And 29.6.
Doug, do you know if the most recent award has been added to that total?
I don't think that, that came in, I think, in mid-April. This was early April that I got the numbers from. So it doesn't include that award. And I did reach out to the MBLC and they confirmed that these state grant monies are available for repairs and maintenance. So that's the state aid money. We do have some money in various library trust funds. Many of these have restrictions on what we can spend it on, like books and children's books, but the two big ones, which is the Geo Fisher Trust, has about $10,000 in it that would be available. And then the Wheelock Library, which is the largest of the trusts, has about $11,000. So about $20,000 that we could expend from those trusts.
All right, and are each of those restricted or in any, okay.
They're, they might be restricted, but in a good way, they might be, they're typically written to do like permanent fixtures of the building.
And so the state was 155.6? You said 126 and 29.6?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So looking back at what I ended up doing and sending around is I sent out as one of the meeting documents, like my Adobe wasn't working to combine everything, so I attached a bunch of documents. And one of them was a PDF of the email chain that ended with Dana, your reference regarding the capital campaign. Will honor its 20,000 contribution. We have not received an invoice and an additional 20,000 for a total sum of 40,000. So that was in reply to William's email regarding a breakdown of what was needed to fill the shortfall. And so I understand that, so the cost of the project is 288.6, making our shortfall either 54.486 or 19,486. And so I think the, so 54.48 minus, so you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I did some math on it.
Yeah.
It's, if you take the 288.600, we have 140,000, which is 70,000 from the MHC grant and 70,000 from the CPC grant, which we know this latter money cannot be used, it's the final money that's used. So that brings it down to like 148,000. The capital campaign, we did meet about this and Doug did a lot of due diligence in finding out where monies were for, you know, as far as the library, the Board of Library Trustees. So we said we would go up to 40,000. We did say, we did already commit to 20,000, that has not been used yet. So that's why I sent that correspondence to William because we want to make sure, we want that to be used, which he understands. So that brings us down to, that brings it down to 180,000.
Okay.
So if the, if the library trustees go up to the amount that they said, then the def, we're okay. In fact, it's a little bit, we actually have a little bit overage.
So, okay, so the, so the cost of the, okay, so what he said is that the cost of the project is 288.6, making our shortfall either 54.486 or 19,486. He rounded the delta at 35,000 and it was really 35,114.
Yeah, so, so in essence, if you look at the 19,486, the trust, the capital campaign said we'll give another 20.
Okay.
So if, if the Board of Library Trustees agrees to what they had initially talked about going up, going up to 109.114, there's actually going to be a little bit extra money because we rounded it up.
Okay, so funding it for, okay, so funding it for 35, or we could go down to the penny or, or just go to the original figure, you're saying that all we would need to do then is, since you're saying that you're putting in, that capital campaign is putting in 20, we really need...
An additional 20.
An additional 20, that's what I meant.
And that was never spent, just so you know.
Okay. So.
So the balance left is 108.600.
108, yeah.
And, okay, so that's because CPC ends up being spent last?
No. No, that just, I, we debit, we took that, if you take the, what William has told us, it's 288.600, then you take out the 140,000, which is the 70 from the preservation grant and the 40,000 from CPC, then it's down to 148. Take the 40,000 out that the, that the capital campaign said we do, then it brings it down to what Doug said, 100, 1,000, 100, 108 and 600 dollars. And so what we're saying is, I guess way back when, the trustees, in order, remember we had to do, we had to prove that there would be funding so that we could apply for the grant. And the capital campaign said we do the 20,000 so the estimate could be paid.
So, so.
So it's 1, so the, it's 109,000.114, but minus, it's, we're just, the deficit...
You rounded up and so the, the...
Yeah, we rounded up.
So it goes down a little to 108.6. So jog my memory, please.
Sure.
So we, we ended up committing to it, but we didn't commit a funding source and actually vote on that, is that right or no?
Well, there's two, there's two things, Roger. So the first thing is that we committed to 74,114, but, so we approved that amount, but then we, we did agree as a board that we would, that we could go up to 109.114. So, so we need to, again, confirm, like, yes, we will, you know, honor our commitment that we made previously of the 109.114, and yes, we do need to, you know, identify a source, which, you know, Doug has, you've done research on that.
So you're saying that when the 74.114, we committed to it as, in support of the project, but we didn't actually vote on a funding source for that 74?
No, I don't think we did.
So we need to find a funding source then for the 108.6?
Correct.
Did, did you kind of pencil out a recommendation of how we would?
Well, I mean, I think we, we might as well use some of the trusts. Well, two things, one is we might as well use some of the trusts and the state aid, you know, we've, we've been saving state aid for, I don't know, 10 years now for the project and we have spent some of it for, I think, some of the furniture ended up getting spent out of that money, but.
Well, we gave 100,000, I think, for a library building.
Like a group, correct.
We did 125,000, but we, I don't think we did any furniture out of that.
Well, I don't know if it went to the furniture, but yeah, there was a chunk of money that we've already contributed, but there's still a lot left in state aid.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So I'm just saying that, that money we've been saving for a long time for the building. So, you know, I would, I would say we could take, you know, maybe 20,000 out of the trusts and then the rest out of the state aid would be a...
Which state aid though? You'd mentioned two accounts.
Yeah.
And you're saying that both can be used for this purpose?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it matters because it's just a pool of money, so I would say just the library.
And those monies, those don't have to go back to the town, in other words, we, it's almost like a sort of mini stabilization account, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We can carry that over.
Correct. It's, it's interesting, the, the interest that's accrued on that balance goes to the town, but the principal stays with us.
Okay, gotcha.
So, I mean, it's, it's a pool of money, we can divvy it up how we see fit.
All right, well, I guess I would then entertain a motion. I'm thinking, I'm thinking that the timing of this is crucial because we're coming up to town meeting and so any shortfall, you know...
There won't be a shortfall, we won't have that issue.
Right, and, no, what I'm saying is, is that town administration is concerned about if there is a shortfall and you're saying we're gonna, we're gonna close it.
I think the other thing is that the scaffolding's up.
The concern is that we gotta get it done or we won't get that one grant.
Yeah, the scaffolding's up, we gotta get it done.
So there's a deadline for the mass preservation grant.
Oh.
So we have to get, we gotta do, they want to continue with their work.
So it's more about that than this town meeting?
Yeah, it's not, it hasn't, yeah, exactly.
But it's also, the scaffolding is up, if you drive past the library, it's there.
Yeah, so they're working on it right now.
Okay.
So if, if the board, you know, wants to use the trusts first, I mean, we can take 11,000 from the Wheelock Fund, which is pretty much the entire balance of that piece, and 9,000 from Geo Fisher Fund, which is almost the entire balance of that, that's 20, and then the remaining 88.6 from the equalization fund, I'm sorry, the library incentive fund.
Doug, did you say some of those trusts are for this kind of thing?
Those two both are.
Which I think makes a lot of sense.
They're for like permanent improvements to the library.
Permanent improvements, okay.
So, so let me ask you this, is those, who, who is custodian of those funds and that, can we zero those out without?
We can. The Board of Library Trustees has oversight on those trusts. So it doesn't, you know, remember, that's, that's only the balance we can spend that I'm telling you?
Yes.
There's more money in there that, you know, they basically give you a principal, they donated 100 grand and we get to spend all the interest.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you can't expand it down below, we don't know what, I mean, maybe we have that information, but say there's 100,000 there, we can, and, sorry, 100,000 you can't touch, but we have 110,000, we can spend 10. So that's what Doug came up with.
Okay.
So you're saying 11,000 from the Wheelock Trust, 10,000 from the Geo Fisher Trust?
He said nine.
11 from Wheelock.
Yeah.
And nine from Fisher. And I, and we can, we can vote on it tonight and then I can confirm with Mary, the town accountant, just to double check everything.
All right, so, so it would be 11,000 from Wheelock, 9,000 from Fisher, 88,000 from library incentive?
88.600.
Oh, I'm sorry, 88.600 equals, all right, so 108.6, okay.
That's gonna leave approximately 40,000 in the library incentive and then 29,000 in the equalization.
And then we also have state aid too.
Well, that, those are the two state aids.
That is, and those are both, okay.
We haven't gotten credited for what we got for this year, correct?
Correct. There was another payment, I think, like two weeks ago, that's not included.
I think it was about 20K, is what I read.
Is that what it was?
I think I looked it up, yep.
Okay, then I'll, I'll accept the motion to fund the, the remaining balance of the Kubla project for 11,000 from Wheelock Trust, 9,000 from the Fisher Trust, and 88,600 from the library incentive fund for a total of 108,600 dollars.
Second, oh, sorry, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. All right, any further discussion on the motion?
Yes. So if, if we're coming up with 108.600, I just want to make sure, I'm on the same page as everybody. I see with a note that can be increased to 109.114. So where does the extra 1,114 dollars come from?
I think what Dana had rounded up, the...
Yeah, the difference between the 109.114 and the 108.600 is the difference between the 20,000 the capital campaign gave and that 19.486, which is 514 dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
So everyone's in agreement that the math adds up?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, we, we have a little, is that a little bit extra?
No.
No, it's not extra.
Like, I mean, should we just go to the 109.114?
Well, what I was gonna, thanks, I was wondering, do you think that it could go up? Should we worry about that or should we just do, do what we're doing?
Let's just play it by ear.
They can come back to us. They can come back to us.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big deal if we have to do a little, hopefully it won't be a lot more.
Okay.
And I know it has to finish, be finished by June 30th, so we have some time if there was something, any surprises, we would be meeting before that anyway.
And we have additional funds.
So, all right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to clear the motion carried unanimously five, nothing.
So just related to that, I think that we just also need to make sure that we, you know, kind of plan, you know, periodically to, to check on the status of the Kublas. It's expensive to go up there, but it's more expensive not to go up, so.
I think we agreed a few months ago to, excuse me, that, to proceed with formulating a regular maintenance plan yesterday.
I have an idea on that. His name is The Architect King. He's the one that worked on it like back in the 2000s. He is going to be overseeing all the ma, the work that's being done. Maybe we could speak with him and ask him what he thinks is best and maybe he, maybe we can even contract with him to check it like in a year or whatever we think makes sense.
Yeah.
Because he really knows the project and he really is dedicated to the Kubla and the library.
I think, yeah, I think we need to formalize, I totally agree with Dana. And even if it's not a year, like maybe every two years or whatever, that, whatever the architect recommends, but we need, you know, it's one of these things is, you know, we can't see it, it's, you know, until, so we need to...
Depending on what it costs, right? So as long as we still qualify for state aid money?
Yeah.
That would be a source of income for us that we could use to pay somebody for maintenance every two, three years, something like that.
Yeah, I think we need to commit to that.
Yeah.
Even like three years, 11 or 12,000 or 20,000 dollars.
He can let us know too. I don't, I, I can't remember if they had to, it, they might, I can't, I think, used to be to climb up there, but I'm not so sure. I don't know if you have to take like a machine and climb up there.
All right.
But it would be, it would be money well spent.
I thought they did that, I think that's part of why it was so expensive to have the initial estimate, right? Like, because they had to get the crane to get up there to take a really good look at it.
And we had, we had talked about this in that, prior to the fall time meeting when I spoke in, in support, that, on behalf of the trustees to have the town fund CPC monies, I did mention that our plan as trustees was to have a regular maintenance plan, so.
Yeah, and honestly, the slate roof is, whatever, 80, 100 years old too, so it'd be good to have that checked at the same time.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
Okay, and, all right, any further discussion regarding Kubla? All right, minutes, I...
I am delinquent, I apologize.
That's okay.
I promise I will do them, not this weekend, but I will, I will work on those.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that and we all do. It's just one of those things where I, because we're without an admin, I've been doing the, the agenda, and so just as a sort of punch list, it allows us not to forget them even though we know in advance that we may not vote on all, any or all of them, and so, so we'll defer those to the next meeting. So thank you for doing those. Approve bills, okay. Lately, we've been doing that as a, as a sort of, I lost the words, as a, sort of like a consent agenda, so I will take a motion, I will accept a motion or entertain a motion to approve and fund the warrants number 40 through 43 for the amounts and funding sources contained in the meeting packet information.
Second?
Well, I need a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, so who was, who's moving, so?
I said so moved.
Okay, okay, so, so Carrie makes a motion, Doug seconds. Any discussion on the motion?
So this came up when, when Dr. TeShara was the interim chair before you had come on board. And I always thought that the chair couldn't make any motions at all, but she had said that if it's something that is like kind of routine and wrote for, for the board, you know, such as bills, that, that would be appropriate for the chair to make those motions. I'm just putting that out there.
Actually, I didn't make the motion, I said I'll entertain the motion, in other words, I helped the group.
I'm not saying that you did.
Oh, all right, yeah.
I'm, I'm saying that you could.
Oh, okay.
And we should probably come back to that at a later date to see if that's, you know, that the chair can do that going forward. I thought that was interesting.
Yep.
So making the distinction between routine things or things that are formulated as part of the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see why the chair couldn't make a motion of their own either, you know?
Right, right, right.
Like if you had something great you wanted to bring up to the board, I mean, it's kind of leaves a member out, which is unfortunate.
And I think what ends up happening sometimes, and this is probably more tradition than anything else, that oftentimes in these discussions at chair, sometimes depending on the committee, is the one that chooses to speak last on things versus infusing their opinion, either at the outset of the discussion or in the middle of it. It's really up to the flavor of the board how that's done, but, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
I do have a couple of comments.
Sure.
So I noticed that on the warrants, there's some invoices for evergreen environments and that's the green roof maintenance. That was...
Which warrant are we referring to?
Well, so it's on warrant 41, it might be on all of them.
Humidifier installation, green roof maintenance?
Evergreen environments.
Right. So was that the...
For 159.99 and then 185. So anyway, the, all the line items for evergreen environments, for the green roof maintenance, that is something that the capital campaign had to agree on paying for and the previous library director was forwarding us the bills directly.
Okay.
But in her departure, that message never made it to Eileen, so I noticed that. I talked to Eileen today and the capital campaign will end up contributing to that.
So are you saying that the, the warrant, well, okay, so...
I don't think it affects us approving the warrant, right? Because these have already been paid. I don't think it affects us approving the warrant, right? Cause these have already been paid. It's just, I think we'll end up having the, Capital Campaign will end up reimbursing the library for that expense.
Gotcha. Okay, okay.
Um, so that's, that's that one. And then the second one, which I just have an open question to Eileen, is Renault HVAC and controls? This is the work that they've been doing to kind of fix the HVAC.
Was that also on, um, warrant forty-one?
Warrant forty and forty-one.
Okay.
And again, I don't think this, this has nothing to do with us approving the warrants, but, um, I had a question on who, what account is paying for that? Because ultimately, I think that would be something that could come out of Leeds, right? Because it's, it's an issue that has happened with the renovation.
Yeah.
Right.
So depending on how that works out, I'll just convey that information to William and figure that out.
But let me, let me ask you that. All right, thank you for doing that. Um, does that mean though that because in this fiscal year that Leeds money has come in, that there's a deadline to identify and, and appropriate those monies toward the HVAC or anything else that is building related?
That's a good question.
Could you, could you also ask whether they, whether we're forced to, whether that money, whether those Leeds money, uh, Leeds reimbursement goes away as of June thirtieth? Or whether that can carry over at any point?
Yep.
Yeah, cause I thought originally we were gonna use that to pay off the bond, so. That would be something they'd do pretty quickly, right, to bring it down?
Yeah, I mean, that's what the Leeds money is for. I, I think ultimately it's.
Doesn't matter, yeah.
It's the town money. It's just a matter of which bucket it comes out of, I guess. But I'll check with William on that.
It definitely has gotten into a house. We got a wire transfer. We did, did we get that? The money?
I'm assuming that's what that message meant when they conveyed to us that we got.
It was they that did it.
Uh, wasn't that from the town administrator, the original? I think it was originally from the town administrator.
Okay, good, okay, good. Oh, that's good. Becau- yeah.
So, I'll just put this out there about, um, you know, a- as we get bills and we pay them, uh, out of the, um, the budget. So, if we are finding that we didn't allocate enough money for this in the budget, then I would say we find alternate funding sources. So what's gonna come down to is we're changing how we're spending the budget, right? And granted, that money just goes back to the town anyways, anything that's not expended from the budget. But if, you know, these Renault, um, uh, bills are, were budgeted for, then I don't think we should just say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna pay this out of something else, cause it was budgeted. So.
Yeah, if it's considered normal building maintenance, then it should stay in that.
Yes, because that will change how much we get next year. It'll be very difficult for us to, to do that, to budget for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so in other words, yeah, i- i- mid-cycle to sort of, cr- yeah, if we create that savings for the town,
Yep.
then it's like, oh, library doesn't need that anymore, but that's not a recurring revenue source.
But I think the Renault are extraordinary, right? Like the, you know, the work that they're having to do.
A good question. I'm not, yeah.
Can we find that out? Cause is there gonna be regular maintenance on some of this stuff?
Well, in next year's budget, we're gonna have to account for maintenance of, of the entire building, right? Just like they always would.
So that's, and have, we haven't, what's happened with that?
I don't know.
In absence of a director, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know.
That would be a question for.
What we used to get, and I don't know if anybody's seen this in a while, but it would give us a percentage of how much we've spent out of certain, certain budgets. And that gives us an indicator whether, say, oh no, we're spending this too fast or not, and I'd like to kind of see where that particular line item is. Um, if, you know, we're spending it faster than we normally would with the Renault, um, HVAC bills.
Is that an internal, um, um, document, or does that come from the town accountant?
It comes from the town accountant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is surprising that we haven't received that yet, you know, April.
I think we, I think somebody needs to get onto that. If there's somebody in the board that can take that over, besides Roger, cause he's doing a lot.
I mean, Doug, are you up to that task?
Or maybe Carrie.
Or, or Carrie, or?
Sure, I can ask.
So those are the only questions on those four warrants, and I don't, like, as I just mentioned, it doesn't impact us approving those warrants.
So it's not so much a percentage. I think that there's a monthly ledger that shows, and then we could just do the math about how much is spent.
Well.
Our, the director would always present that monthly thing that said how much of each line item was expended, and of course, eventually it ends up at a hundred percent or over or under.
Right, right.
Have you seen that?
Line item, you'd know.
Right, right, right.
And that's what I think if we ask them, we can get. Somebody needs to ask them, and we need to know wha- what's happening with the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of surprised we haven't heard from Evan and William, like, you know, the budget, cause, I mean, it needs to be reviewed with the finance committee.
Well, there's been a lot going on with the.
And maybe it has. I know that they met on their Saturdays in March, um, and they meet more frequently, um, or additional meetings, up to town meetings.
When you met with William, uh, with Evan, like, he didn't mention that this is gonna be going before?
I, I haven't gotten into the, the nitty gritty of the budget figures about what's been spent thus far. Are you talking about FY twenty-four?
I'm talking about for next year, you know, the preparation for, you know, cause town meeting is coming up in May.
Right, and, and, um, typically, I, I was told that unless I'm mistaken, how, uh, aside from the director sharing that information with the board, how much sort of, um, number crunching, if any, has the board actually done? None, right? In other words, we're, we're collaborating with the director, we're currently working without a, a, um, you know, permanent director. How did that work as far as, would the dir- the director would, would?
The director would put together the budget proposal, and usually one or two of us would, would help her out with it, like, just as a second eye to look at it and make sure everything looked okay. And then she would present that to the, uh, finance committee.
So as Evan is acting director, you would think that, you would think that as acting director, that would be Evan that would need to do that.
Correct. That would be Evan.
He prob- he may have done that. We've probably done.
Right.
But, but I'm, I'm surprised that you haven't.
Why don't I take that off, why don't I take that off your hands, Carrie?
I mean, I'm happy, like, if you talk to Evan and you get it, like, I'm happy to help review it. I can meet, but, um, but I think that's really like a, you know, that it's, it really should be the acting director who does the budget and then we review it.
Okay.
Interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he has the accountant, works for him.
I'll, I'll reach, I'll reach out as far as, um, FY twenty-four and twenty-five. I know that's, um, later on in the agenda, but we're.
But I'm happy to, you know, to review it and to, you know, and to, to go, to go to any meetings, you know, before the finance committee, like, I can help out with that, but it's not us creating the budget.
Right, right. Okay, um, so are we then okay with the fundings, at least for this motion, because there's a motion on the table?
All right.
The funding sources and, and the amounts?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on warrants forty through forty-three? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to clear the motion carried unanimously? Um, ongoing business, um, a lot of these are basically placeholders, grant updates. We know what's going on as far as the cupola, so that's all set. Um, we've discussed the various finances regarding, that particular project and other expenses that, that, uh, we've thrown at, uh, various, uh, construction issues. Any, any grant updates that we really haven't discussed? All right, um, flood remediation and construction updates, then seven B. I know that the rug in the children's room had started to be put down, and they were putting it down in the wrong. They didn't realize that there was a pattern. And so, um, I know that that was, uh, that Sarah and Cindy recognized that.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah. So Cindy, thank you for alerting me when I came to visit and, you know, really raising the alarm.
Thank you, Cindy, Sarah, hello.
And then, um, so Cindy and, um, and Sarah Bannister, our head of Children's Library Services, um, you know, alerted us to the issue. And then we, you know, contacted, uh, William and, or William Blake and Evan Bressard, and Evan came that night and, um, stopped them, you know, and, and my understanding is that, um, that installation company, you know, its services are not gonna be used anymore and there'll be another.
So, so is, is the, is the installation stalled, or is that going?
It's, it stops. It's, yeah, it's dead, dead stopped right now.
And in reality, the community room was installed incorrectly also.
Okay.
It's just not, it's not as noticeable because they're all gray.
But it's not even noticeable. So you can't really.
But it's, and when you, if, if you know what you're looking at, it's clearly installed incorrectly.
Okay. So the, the, so whoever installed it, just, just randomly placed down the carpet?
I don't think they, they, they thought they were following some kind of pattern, but they did not.
Right.
Know what they were doing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a four by four grid, so there's like four by four, so there's sixteen, and then those are all repeating patterns.
Okay.
And they didn't follow any of that.
Okay, so.
So unfortunately, I was hoping William was gonna be here tonight, cause he's really the person to ask.
I didn't know. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Because like, like Carrie said, from what I understand, they've stopped work, they've.
They haven't started again, Cindy, right? Like, I was there.
Started because the carpet isn't, it's, it's questionable that they have enough carpet material to start over.
And, and whether the existing carpets that were put down can be pulled up and re-applied, because, you know, they are glued down, and then apparently some of them were shaved, right? That's, cause the, this, our library, you know, staff noticed some pieces that were shaved off of the edges, which, you know.
And that was, and that was one of my main, well, aside from the timing of let's get this darn room back on, you know, online, was that, yeah, uh, is there enough excess to, to make up what could be spoilage? All right, so let me do this.
Did we get an update on that?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I think William is, William and, and Evan are the only ones that can update on that, update us on that.
How about if I, if I ask them, um, I'll, I'll tackle the, um, the FY twenty-four and twenty-five stuff and the ETA and the children's room rug. I'll take care of that.
I think you should ask about the c- community room rug too. Just ask them what their plan was for that.
I think so too.
Okay.
I mean, my opinion is it was their installation mistake, and they should be responsible for it, but I would guess that they're gonna let the community room pass and just focus on the children's room.
Right.
Have you seen the community room?
Yeah, I've seen, I was there yesterday. It's, it's, I mean, it's a random pattern. I mean, it's a pattern anyways, right? So it's not obvious. I mean, it just looks like a pattern, but it's not as clean as it should look.
Right.
But I think it's, it's okay. I don't know with the library. I think it's okay.
Yeah. I really, I'm not too happy about that, but I don't know what else I can do.
No, I, I'm not happy about it either.
I guess they call that compromise, um, uh, and so, all right, um.
They'd probably have to rip it up, right?
They'd have to rip it up, right, so.
Start anew.
So I will, I will ask some about that, um, and, um, the berm, the berm, the curb cut, I guess the, that open wide driveway for the two, uh, homes above the, uh, library on South Street. Now that water, they put in like a berm to have that water flow down in front of the library and not down the, um,
The hill there.
Yeah, down the hill.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I mean, there were, there were two things they really did. They did that, and honestly, I'm not sure how long it's been there. It could have been there for a month.
They cleaned out the, um.
Around the drain, the perimeter drains in the, um, back walkway, they've added a lot of, um, gravel around the drain itself, and then they've added like a little gravel path up to the sidewalk, so that presumably that's where water will be a lot easier to go down those drains, so I think it's, seems like those are significant improvements.
But also the storm drains in, on, on, and on the common, and a few months back, were also cleaned out, I guess. They'd have been gunked up with leaves and who knows what.
On the common or on the side? I thought it was.
It was it on the?
I thought it was on the side, um, where the children's room. No, I thought the other side.
Are you talking within the property or, or the street side? I thought it was curb side, the big machines that come in and, and.
They probably did that too, right? They do that in town in the spring anyways. The, the storm drains, the big storm drains.
Okay.
So I know we had a pretty big storm like two weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
At least I did at my house down the street, and it downpoured for an hour or two really heavy, and our, our street was like a, a little river, and they said the library was fine in the back area.
That's good.
There was, I guess there was another leak around the teen room though.
So that's, again, like the doors.
There was?
That door.
I think it's the doors.
I don't think it was that big, but there was water coming in the teen door again.
Did, did we assign that to anybody on the board?
My impression is William is looking at that also. It's on his list.
Is he looking, I mean.
I think we need to really follow up on that. I'm concerned about it.
And again, if we, if we can use some of the Leeds money for that, then maybe that'll help, you know, move it along.
I can follow up on that as well. I'm just a sort of bullet pointed email. You, you, you did, uh, double duty last month. I may as well just relieve you of that. And so any other interior issue, all right, so actually, I'm, I'm ahead of myself. Seven B, I guess, kind of goes into seven C, because some of it could be flood related and some of it may not be. So flood remediation, construction updates, but seven C is teen room carpet and any other interior issues, so, um, I guess related to either the construction or the flood. I don't know if it happens only in heavy rains, but wasn't there some water coming in through the roof area in some of the rooms, either the community room area that sits beneath the, that roof terrace? So is there still water that comes in?
So John, John and I happened to be there yesterday, just, we ran into each other there, and we were talking to the children's librarians, and there are, there are a couple spots on that ceiling. It was a little unclear what, when those occurred, but I think the consensus was it has been relatively recent that they occurred. So they have leaked in the past, you know, three or four months. They were fairly minor leaks, like they weren't like the original.
So this is commu- community room?
This is the community room?
This is the community room. They're relatively minor spots on there, not like it was, you know, earlier.
Remember the children's.
There's still leaks.
Yeah. Remember, the children's services is in the community room now, so that's why the children's, you know, staff would have noticed.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. Yeah, and any, and amount of water coming in the building, I always, that kind of freaks me out a bit, you know, as far as.
And, and there are a couple marks on the, um, I'm sorry, not marks, there's on the, um, uh, drywall. I'm trying to see, there's not one in here. There's where water was in the drywall on the ceiling and like the drywall kind of sank a little bit. And they're sticking down a little bit.
Can we just wrap the library in bubble wrap?
I think that, I think.
Is that the same room you're referring to?
Cindy might know, but I think those, that's the community room. I think those have been there for the whole time, like six months. But those need to get fixed, cause they just look weird. That's something else that I don't know if the board can take up or just stick on William's list.
Okay.
I'm not sure why they didn't fix those when they did the rest of the community room, cause it's probably like a, an hour job to finish it, to fix it.
And is there any, should we worry about what, why they're, why, why we had that damage?
I, I think they said that they've been there for, you know, a long time, so we can assume that might have been the original issue that they fixed, whatever, nine months ago.
And I guess that, that underscores the benefits of walkthroughs that contain pictures and it's like, wait a minute, that was, that wasn't there last month.
That's what John was doing. He was like, oh, he was looking through his walkthrough pictures, and it's like, yeah, that was there last time. He did do that.
Right, and so, okay, um, we're ready to move on to all, I guess FY twenty-five, four and twenty-five. I'll, or do you have more?
I just had, uh, one thing to mention. Um, so, do we know if, uh, Renault is, um, the activity that they are doing for maintenance at, at, uh, the HVAC system, is it really to, uh, fix that gasket, that noise? Is that why we're spending so much money, or, um, is that not even being considered?
I thought there was something to do with the fact that the filters, that there was, the lack, lack of coordination prevented, among other things, having, being able to slide the f- filters, um, fully out because there was either beams or something then in the way of that. Um, so I don't know if that was ever considered to be a source of the noise, but, um, I have no idea. Is the poltergeist still in the building, Cindy?
I'm not certain.
Okay.
Because I only am in the community room.
Oh, all right.
So I haven't.
So those noises are only heard in elsewhere?
I know that the children's rooms have had noises before, and upstairs has had noises, and since we haven't been in the children's room, I know at different points I have heard it in the last couple of months in the workroom, um, but it hasn't been to the extent that it had been.
Okay.
Okay.
So do you, so you, but you, to your question, you're saying what is the nature and extent of their?
The expense, right?
And, and that is still building related? It's not just routine?
Right, yeah, right. So it's one thing, it's like, are we throwing money at something that's really not? Right?
Yeah.
See, see what I'm saying? So it's one, it's one thing to say, I wanna know what that noise is, and you're not telling them how much money to spend or time to spend on it, right? And they could be spending tens of thousands of dollars to figure out what that noise is, and it's just a noise, you know what I mean? So that's kind of what I'm, uh, asking, so maybe we can see the invoices and if they have a line item, I think that would be helpful. So maybe Eileen has those.
Yeah.
So I can certainly.
And who's directing it?
Who's directing that sort of work?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say the acting library director, right? That would be, or Evan and, and William.
And I know Cindy's being pummeled with questions, but she's here as an observer, but, um, as far as whether any, I know there were things regarding the zones and, and. and, and places that were too hot and too cold, is, is that, has that been remediated? Is the building kind of acting as it should thermostat wise?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. Because different people go in and, and do different things to, to fix it. I don't know if they're still doing that or not, or if it's actually been fixed. Debbie might be a good person to ask, because I know that she has been in some ways spearheading and on Renault to get those fixed, because she boots on the ground.
Yeah, so I think we did get an update from her a few months ago, and she was like, I remember it was like a big hero thing. Like she finally figured out what it was that was, you know, causing the hot and cold spots and, and it was remediated. So I haven't heard anything since.
I have another question.
Sure.
Same line, I was looking at, do we know what DMH Electric is doing? Because we have some invoices from them too, I'm just wondering.
Which, which warrant?
I'd have to go back and look.
Do you remember which warrant? Because I know that. Yeah, Eileen, Eileen does a, a high level summary when she sends those approved warrants out to us in the emails of what those were.
Forty-one.
Alright, she indicated in forty-one educational materials humidifier installation.
That's the humidifier installation then?
Alright.
Okay.
That makes sense.
And why do we need that?
That's for the, what's that room called? Historic records?
Historic records.
That's, that's been all along, yeah.
So would that be better referred to as climate control? It's more a climate control system, right?
Yes, it's supposed to be climate controlled, both of those rooms.
So maybe her email, I don't know, to call it a humidifier, well, it may.
Dehumidifier.
Or dehumidify, yeah, so it's climate control for the, alright.
And actually, you know, that might be some of the Renault charges too, right? Some of that could be that, if they, they installed it and, and worked with the other company for electrical.
Okay, just, that would be good.
Any other teen carpet or any other interior issues? FY twenty-four and twenty-five, I think we kind of, we kind of blended some things in there, and I'll ask.
Sorry, you skipped the teen.
Teen carpet.
Teen carpet, I did get an update from William that there, originally we're getting an estimate from the company that was installing the carpet. And they're obviously not going to do that, so he's looking for other options.
Okay.
So I, hopefully by our next meeting, we'll know what the teen carpet would estimate will be.
Is it carpet or is it flooring?
Yeah, that's for the.
Was it flooring, was it flooring or?
Flooring.
Flooring.
It says carpet, but it's.
So when you say teenager, it's teen gaming room?
It's a teen game room flooring, because we don't want carpet, well, some of us don't want carpet.
Right, so it's a flooring estimate is on hold, okay. Okay, now we're ready to move on to FY twenty-four and twenty-five. Which I think we already spoke of, that I will reach out to the town accountant, but also reach out regarding budgeting issues in general with the town administrator and assistant town administrator.
And I would just reiterate that, to be direct, that we want to review that budget.
Right, alright.
So if you're reaching out to the town accountant, would you also reach out about the expenditures for the current budget?
Yes.
Because I think you said.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so it would include FY twenty-four.
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah, helpful.
Alright, IT update, that's just, that's been a placeholder. Where, you know, we, we have sometimes had updates and everything, but I'm not aware of any IT issues. Item eight. Walkabout, well, John isn't here, I don't know whether he had done one for the month, so. Anyone have any comments regarding any observations? I know you had mentioned your own observation with John on the, the water on the, the roof and, and the, the drywall, which is not so dry, I guess. But does anyone have any other observations that regarding exterior or interior that would otherwise be seen okay? Director's report and stats for, I guess, the second month. Without an admin, those are being, I guess, tabled. Until we have an admin.
Did you mention? Did we have any applicants that we know of for that position, did you say?
Yeah, there were, there were a couple. And I think they, the interviews were e- either happening this week or going to happen very soon.
Before you move on.
Yeah, sure.
And if, if Cindy has, can't answer this, it's, do you know if the staff are still collecting the yes, no log items?
Yes.
In the absence, oh, great.
Or it's more patron comment.
Patron comments, that ends up becoming our yes, no log. Okay, yeah, I find that really valuable, so I just, at least if it's not being reported, at least it's being collected still.
Right.
Great, thank you.
I believe all the statistics are still being collected and, and what they do that I don't know, but they are still collected.
Great, thank you.
The new director will be busy.
So I, I, I like those, I like those logs. It's just, it's, I don't know whether it's a common practice. I know that seeing those and seeing the comments and the wide variety of comments, especially the positive ones. A lot of times people just only opine when they're dissatisfied. So it's nice to see the, the positive comments of, of how the staff have been very helpful and how the programming has really been very rewarding to various age groups and things like that.
I find the other aspect of it more valuable, not more valuable, but I like to see the no, because then that helps the librarians and us know what we need to help fill at the library, you know? No, we don't have that, but we ordered it, right, you know?
Absolutely, yeah, and, and I wouldn't, you know, yeah, absolutely, I agree with you that, that is valuable. It is also, so I, I like to see it as a whole, but, yeah, we need to also be called out, you know, when, when we're not meeting a, 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 a need. Alright, so, old business, staff appreciation. Okay, I had sent out John Babriski's email. Where he summarized the staff appreciation regarding the deliverables during that staff appreciation day or week to the, to the library staff, thank you, library staff, you do a great job. And especially with various staffing issues too, so. It's the least we could do to recognize the staff where there were various items, including snacks and such, delivered during the week. And so, and, and so John and, who else was, oh my god, I'm drawing a blank, who else is coordinating that?
So, so, so John and I worked together, John was fantastic, like he was so enthusiastic. So he actually wasn't in town on actual staff appreciation day, but we met, he actually procured the majority of the items, which he and his, and his lovely wife, you know, assisted as well. So they actually, you, before we even met, he was so enthusiastic. He went, I think he went to BJ's and he got some, some chips and, you know, like little individually bag snacks and some sodas and some, I think some sparkling water, some seltzer. And he brought that kind of in advance to staff appreciation day. So then we met and we kind of talked about like what we would like to do, you know, after talking with, you know, the, the, the board about, you know, doing something. And so, so we agreed to do a delivery from edible arrangements. And they had a really cute fruit platter that had some little unicorn, chocolate covered unicorns and fruits. And so that was delivered on Tuesday afternoon. And then John also, and, and his wife assisted with the delivery of this, got some cheesy bread bites from Bread Guy Breads, which of course are delicious. And those were delivered, I believe, Tuesday and Wednesday morning, you know, so that, that was great. And then I stopped by, this, this part isn't listed in the, the message, but I got some flowers on the actual Tuesday and a card from all of us. And, you know, and, and delivered it, and I'm so glad that I did, because then I found out about the carpet at the same time, but, yeah, so. But thank you so much, I mean, we have such a wonderful staff, and it was really like our pleasure, you know, to do it. So we have, we, we really enjoyed, enjoyed doing that. And I thank you, thank you to the board, you know, for agreeing to chip in, so John put his Venmo on there. So I, I Venmoed John, and then, you know, the, the flowers, the card were nothing, so I, I just recovered that myself.
Thank you so much, yeah, so thank you. And so, yeah, I appreciate you, you know, really coordinating that.
Oh, it's so much, it's like one of my favorite things that we've done all year, so, yeah, really nice.
Yeah, we haven't often been able to coordinate and put something together. And I think a lot of times that we, what we've done in the past, even though it was well intended, it wasn't always well received. And I feel like what you guys put together was really well received, so that, that's huge.
Actually, I should also give a shout out to, to Debbie, because she, you know, like I, I talked to, you know, John and I both, like, you know, talked to Debbie in, you know, about what kind of makes sense, because there's certain things that maybe, you know, they, they, you know, are a little sick of. You know, so, you know, we kind of, we wanted to get something that they would really appreciate, so.
Right, yeah. And I think if I didn't mention before, I did reach out to the trustee list group. And they mentioned that these sort of appreciation doesn't come from any other funding source except the trustees' pockets. So, so we'll have to just plan for that going forward and, you know, so thank you to everybody who contributed.
Yeah, thank you, I, I think for things like the food and, you know, like, you know, flowers and cards, I think that all makes sense. I think that we do have some leeway for things like, I know Cindy, you, and, and Debbie, when she was last time, you know, talked about, you know, maybe like a, you know, a jacket or hats or something. So I think that's something that we could spend from state aid, and I think that, you know, it's not just once a year that we appreciate our staff. Like that's a nice kind of reminder, and that, like, we of course want to take advantage of that to acknowledge the staff. But I think throughout the year, we want to make sure that we continuously appreciate the staff. And then also too, like, you know, we can appreciate the staff and, you know, do things like hats and jackets. But then that's also, you know, good publicity for the library, so it's kind of a win-win, because, you know, our staff is, you know, proud to, you know, to wear, you know, the branded material.
So that's a great point. And I think rather than doing something new and say, hey, we're going to buy, you know, new vests for every staff member, because we did. We, we, we put out orders for, I think, jackets, and people really love the jackets. So, but it's one of those things where, you know, and I'll equate this to the, to the Boy Scouts, right? So they'll have scouts leave, they'll have new scouts come in, same with li- librarians, you know, we'll have new people kind of come and go. And they kind of miss out on, on, so I think it would be nice, at least once a year, to have a, have a call for orders for, you know, library jackets, at least maybe once a year, and then people can.
And maybe things like hats, like maybe if we decide, because I know Sarah Banister had mentioned, you know, when I met with her on something with her friends, like, oh, it'd be nice when we go to the fun fair, like to have like a graph in public library, you know, ball cap, you know, something like that. But maybe we can order some extras, you know, too, so that if somebody comes later, you know, they can, you can have enough for them to.
Yeah, I think the reason why we did it and the way we did it is because bulk orders, you know, especially for custom, you know. But if we can manage to have a relationship where we can do one offs, I think that would be nice.
Do we, do we remember who we ordered those jackets from? Because I think that's a great idea, is to get jackets for the newer librarians, so they all have the same thing.
I think there were some heavy, I think Cindy, you're saying like maybe a lighter weight one? Because I think yours, the one that you have is a little heavier, was that, if I not remember right?
If we were ordering new, right?
I think, I love the jacket that you got the last time, because it's a good midweight. So it's good from like, early spring.
Through the fall.
Through the fall, not during the summer, obviously, but it's, it's nice, so you can stick something underneath it. It's just a phenomenal jacket.
Who, who arranged that last time? Was that through someone in the library?
Yeah, I think we just approved the funding source.
Right, that's what I think too.
But we could probably find the invoice, right, like if we know.
I had to, I had to clean out my Gmail. But the major contributor was a lot of the, the attachments, so I'll see if I have it, and Doug, I'm sure if I have it, you might have it too.
I'll check too.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, because I think what you're saying, what you're saying, Aaron, is that people that weren't around, we should order some for them. I don't see why we wouldn't do that, once we find it, I think that's a very good idea, that's like letting them know.
And we can decide later on if we want to add different items, you know, maybe more seasonal.
That sounds fair.
That's a good idea.
Alright, any other old business that we haven't thought of? Okay, any new business items that anyone can think of? Alright, any public endpoint? Okay, alright, next regular meetings, well, policy subcommittee to be determined. So you're looking for a staff member? Okay, and the Friends next meeting would be?
May fourteenth at seven thirty.
What day of the week is that?
It's always a Tuesday. Tuesday, always Tuesday, seven thirty, it's, it's Zoom. And, and I, you know, I always, you know, I always plan to attend, but, you know, we, we obviously can't have more than three trustees attend. But if anybody else is interested, I can afford the Zoom.
Gotcha, okay, great. And then next regular.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's going to be, the annual meeting is going to be, I believe it's June eighth. It's a Friday night, let me just, just double check that. It is, oh, I'm sorry, it's, it is a Friday night, but it's June seventh, and.
After library hours in the community room?
It'll be, well, it'll, y- y- yes, it'll be after library hours. I have on here five, but I don't know, sometimes I block out my calendar, so I might have, it might be six, I'm not sure. I'll find out though.
Alright, thank you.
But it's definitely that night, it's definitely that Friday.
So it's a Friday?
It's a Friday night, yes.
Alright, awesome.
So that would be, well.
So as long as.
Time you might be, might work out nicely.
It usually is.
Children's room needs to figure that out, because we're using that as a.
So this everything is, yeah.
Maybe you can do it upstairs, why couldn't we do it upstairs if the library's closed?
Well, the idea is that that area is, is usually coordinated.
Close to the public, right?
Yeah.
It'll take thought.
Yeah, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean.
We have time, I mean, it's only April, and it's possible that we have the children back in, you know, back in, back where it should be.
So the next regular Board of Library Trustees meeting, I mean, we could always, as the need arises, put something together in the interim. But our regular meeting is Wednesday, May twenty-second at seven PM. And scheduled for Meeting Room A, sometimes we swap that out to Meeting Room F here, depending on their need or other committees' needs, so. And.
So this is our last meeting with this current board, right? Because we'll have, have a new member after town election.
Right, unless we need an interim meeting.
Right.
I don't anticipate that.
Will we do a, a leadership election in, in that May agenda, or wait till June?
Oh, wait, wait, when's the, when's the election again? The election is the previous, the twenty-first, so we will know.
But the new person has to be sworn in and everything.
New person has to be sworn in.
I think June makes sense, right?
Generally, you can get, well, yeah, you have to get sworn in at the, at, at the clerk's office, you can get sworn in pretty quick. But I would think June would be a better leadership. You know, discussion.
Or, or we could, we could discuss it on the twenty-second, and then new leadership could occur upon adjournment? I, that's what we did last time, but it was after the election.
People may need to think about it, don't you think?
Yeah, we, we always actually. I think that's a good idea.
I don't remember, yeah.
I think we always have new leadership at the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
And it's what we did last year too. So perhaps we discuss it and let the board members know that next meeting we will be looking for leadership, because I think that's tough to drop on somebody, you know, in their first meeting. because I think that's tough to drop on somebody, you know, in their first meeting.
Yeah, we have to get, you know, the new, our new board member up to speed.
I think it rings a bell.
Yep, right, and that's why I brought it up.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Aaron.
Yeah.
Little did I know.
Yeah.
It's been such an uneventful year, Roger, what are you talking about?
Yeah, right? Yeah, who, who would have known that all the action in town would have been at the library, you know?
It's the place to be.
It's the place to be, and so, um, okay, um, so, um, number fourteen, executive session. I will entertain a, a motion, um, regarding, uh, library director under Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one dash A dash two, uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargains, bargaining sessions or contract and negotia- negotiations with non-union personnel. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
All right, motion made.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, and, uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to clear the motion carried? Five, nothing, we will now enter into executive session, and we'll reconvene only for the purposes of adjournment. Thank you.